Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 7:30 City Council meeting for August 13th, regular meeting. Please stand for invocation by Councilmember Wilder, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the City Council members, our city staff members, our city manager and our staff, and all the citizens of Lynchburg. Continue to give us guidance as we deliberate over the actions for our city to make it a better city, to make it a stronger city, so that we can be more united. We pray for those who have had loss of tragedies through the country, through the shootings. We pray for their families, those loved ones. We pray for peace in our community. Continue to give us guidance and love, and bless our children as they go back to school tomorrow. Let them be in a safe environment. Let them have success in the school year. In your precious name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight's City Council agenda is divided into four sections: consent agenda, public comment, public hearing, and general business. The first section is the consent agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. I will say that two councilmembers were not present during two of the meetings on the consent agenda, so I would ask to pull those, and we vote separately on them. We can vote on the remaining or the last item under the consent agenda, consideration of adopting the resolution.
Madam Mayor, move the consent agenda with the two items, five and six, removed.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Please cast your vote, and the motion passes seven to zero. All right. Next, we're going to vote on the consideration of approving the minutes of the June 25th meeting. And which one?
Madam Mayor, I move that the meeting minutes be approved. Madam Clerk, are these as amended? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
This is the item number five, June 25th.
Right. Number five, June 25th. The motion has been made. And second it?
Second.
All right. Thank you. Please cast your vote.
And this is the abstention. Somebody wanted to abstain?
Right.
Do they want to say that first?
I'm abstaining.
Right. I know it was Councilmember Nelson and Vice Mayor Dole in between. So you're abstaining. Thank you. And the motion passes six with one abstentia. And next is consideration of approving the minutes of the July 9th meeting.
Madam Mayor, I move the approval of the minutes from July 9th. I believe those are as amended as well.
All right. Thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Wilder.
Madam Mayor, I'll abstain because I wasn't here.
All right. Thank you. Please cast your vote, and the motion passes six with one abstentia. Thank you. Next is public comments. During public comments, individual speakers have three minutes to speak, and those representing a group have five minutes to speak. Typically, City Council takes comments made during the public comments section of the agenda under advisement and may refer concerns to the city manager for follow-up. Under public comments, number eight, hear from a citizen regarding a concern. Mr. Frank Forrest. Thank you.
Good evening. Appreciate the council taking the time to hear me. We have an issue that occurs every year during the holiday season, November, December, out on 221 and Enterprise Drive, and Enterprise Drive and Dillard Road leading into J. Crew. The problem is that at that time period, they're gearing up for all their Christmas orders, and sometimes it takes an hour and a half to go one mile to actually get to the parking lot of J. Crew from 221 and Enterprise Drive. I've spoken to the Virginia Department of Transportation. They've never looked into the problem. They say that they can consider it a public safety problem, you know, if they put their eyes out there and see what's happening. I talked to the Bedford County, and they have no problem with it. They say their public safety police officer, they would charge $40 an hour, and you're talking about a two-and-a-half-hour to three-hour window. And also, I've left a letter with the city manager of Lynchburg. He was busy that day, and Robin Craig said, just, if you can write it up, just write it up. So I just wrote it up real quick. The monies that you're talking about, if we base everything on $40 an hour that Bedford County said they would charge for their transportation officer, and if we use the same figures for Lynchburg, three hours, 60 days, 30 days for November, 30 days for December, you're talking about $7,200 for Bedford Police Control Traffic Control Officer, $7,200 for Lynchburg Traffic Control Officer. And that's it. I think people shouldn't have to wait an hour and a half within a mile of work. It's unnecessary. And that's it.
All right.
I'm going to leave it up to the government.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Next is the public hearing. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public, and individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and the matter will refer to council for deliberation. Number nine is the public hearing for the petition of 434 Center LLC at 2009 Enterprise Drive, 1001 and 1009 Dillard Drive to amend the future land use map or FLUM from employment two to mixed use to rezone approximately 15 acres from I-2 Light Industrial District and I-2C Light Industrial District Conditional to B-3C Community Business District Conditional, and for a conditional use permit to allow the construction of commercial and multifamily buildings. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request, and this is Mr. Martin.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, the petition proposes to construct a development with a variety of uses. The development would contain a 126,000-square-foot building containing a gym, fitness center, basketball arena, and an event venue, 116 apartments, restaurant and office space with walking trails also proposed on the 14.83-acre site. The future land use map currently recommends an employment two use for the area. These areas are intended to include light and heavy manufacturing, research, development, and flex space, also large-scale office uses. Restaurant, hotels, and business uses are also appropriate in these areas if they are sized to serve the employment area in which they're located. This petition proposes to amend the future land use map to a mixed use. Mixed use areas do not fit into any one land use category and generally consist of large undeveloped greenfield sites intended to be developed with a balance of residential, commercial, and civic uses. The proposed change to a mixed use designation should be an acceptable transition between the city-county border, the industrial area, and the Windhurst and Summit developments. The Office of Economic Development weighed in on this early on and had no concerns with the proposed future land use map amendment or the proposed rezoning as the property is currently zoned light industrial. Stormwater management is proposed to be addressed by the conversion of an existing sediment basin to a permanent wet pond. The remaining requirements will be met by a combination of onsite best management practices and the purchase of off-site nutrient credits. The major impact associated with development, as we heard previously, would be traffic. The traffic study was submitted by the petitioner, which indicated turn lanes being warranted on Enterprise Drive. A left-turn lane already exists in this area, and the right-turn lane is proposed. The petition also proposes to prohibit left turns into the entrance from Enterprise Drive. While the study indicated that no improvements were warranted on Dillard Drive, the city engineer requested that Dillard be widened to accommodate three 10-foot lanes from the intersection with Enterprise Drive back to the eastern driveway. So widening for three lanes back to this area here. The petitioner has proffered to construct these road improvements. This should help improve traffic conditions during shift changes. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on July 10th and recommended approval of the future land use map amendment, the rezoning, and the conditional use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone to make a presentation? Come forward. Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm Scott Beasley with Hurt and Profit. Tom summarized everything, and I'm not going to go over all that he had already mentioned other than to say that one of the things that he said, I would like to just clarify, he mentioned left turns out or left turns into the development. It's actually restricting left turns out of the development onto Enterprise Drive. The engineer on this project is out of town, and so I'm standing in form today. That's not to say that I don't know anything about the project, because I did do the traffic study and am able to answer any questions you might have on that. The developer is here, Gary Schmicky, to also give a few words about the particular uses in the development. And otherwise, I'm just here to answer any questions technically that you might have about the traffic study or stormwater or site plan. The analysis, the traffic analysis that we did showed no adverse impact to the local street system. It did show that turn lanes were warranted on Enterprise Drive, left and right turns. No turn lanes were warranted on Dillard Drive, but in working with the traffic engineer or former city traffic engineer, we came up with some improvements that are really just kind of good practice in lengthening the turn lane, lengthening, widening the road down to provide a left turn, significantly longer left turn lane westbound, Dillard Drive onto southbound Enterprise Drive, and also at the same time providing a short left turn lane into the development so that essentially if anybody is waiting to turn left, especially in that seasonal traffic that they have out there, that they can get off into a turn lane and not restrict the flow down towards J. Crew and the other developments down there. But otherwise, I'll just leave it at that and let you have, ask any questions of me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beasley. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Okay. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Gary Schmicky, developer. Thank you for letting us share. Yes, we've been developing this site and looking at this plan for quite a while. We look at building it in a couple of different phases. First phase, we're looking at with the fitness center, we're having an indoor turf area, and that's served for multiple uses. We're really big on the athletes, trying to get kids moving, not just athletes into college, but just getting kids off the couch. I'm sure everybody can kind of relate to that. So we have a lot of programs set up for that. The indoor turf is about 100 by 150 feet, so we're going to use that for our adult boot camps, our athletes, just general, kids in general, with our fitness center being there, of course. And the other part of Phase One that we're doing, it says up on there, you have venue and basketball gym area, and that's something we're really excited about. At the beginning, we looked at that as kind of a give-back, let's have some basketball courts inside, and we quickly realized that we needed to maintain it, and that's good business. So it's four basketball courts inside of this venue. It changes over to eight volleyball courts, and it's also, it's just a good multi-use venue. We plan on having trade shows there. We plan on having, you know, a concert, whatever is needed inside. It's a multi-use place. Getting back to kind of the athlete side, there's a lot of travel teams. There's a lot of local use that's needed for this venue, and we feel like providing that space is a good thing. We've seen these things pop up in Virginia Beach, Richmond, Harrisonburg is building a new facility, just a lot of characteristics that we're doing right now. So we see the importance in it, not only for us on our end and our athletes, but also the city as well, too, to be able to use it. And, you know, we've talked to Lisa Meriwether and Marjette as well, and they seem pretty excited about being able to do it. I know the state games was a great success for us and the Commonwealth Games. So it's kind of offering Lynchburg another component to be able to do things. And, you know, we like getting the kids down there as well, too. There's a lot of local, my kids grew up, I coached little league, baseball, basketball, and football. Never, never a place to practice. We're always hurting for practices. Soon as we start the season, our teams would go down, so we wouldn't have practice time. So we're really excited about the venue. The other parts, the restaurant, the apartments you see up there, and a little bit of commercial space, that's in a Phase Two, and we're internally open to making that go from good to better if we see fit to do so, but that's what we're proposing right now. We like mixed use. We love the mixed-use environment. We feel that everything complements each other. But, you know, the fitness area and the venue are definitely what's driving the idea.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Tweedy, councilmembers, I'm Rick Reed with Coldwell Bank Commercial Reading Company, and I'm here on behalf of, and we're at 101 Anjo Court, right there, right at the intersection of 221 and Enterprise Drive. I drive Enterprise Drive sometimes five, six times a day. I'd just like to give you a little history, because I know there was a little concern mentioned about this being industrial and being converted to commercial. Well, I have been working with the Coleman family, Buzzzy Coleman, on this property since back in the late 80s, and at that time, if you recall, Enterprise, I don't even think it was called Enterprise at the time, but it dead-ended to railroad track. And so originally, it was originally Greenstone Commercial, an industrial park. The backland towards the railroad track and down Dillard Drive wasn't earmarked for industrial. Everything probably from about where this property is towards 221, if you've noticed, developed an office and like, light commercial. But as we all know, in the last 30 years, with the opening of Enterprise Drive and the development of Windhurst, the whole complexion of that area has changed dramatically. And this property is, the value this property has got has priced itself beyond industrial. In fact, the value is probably three times, maybe close to four times what your typical industrial site sells for now in the city of Lynchburg. So the property has just become too valuable for commercial. So that's why I just wanted to speak on their behalf and say, we've had, it's been on and off the market, the site's been on and off the market for the last eight years, and I've only had one industrial prospect even considered, and once we talked about the price, they left. Everything that's looked at it has been commercial. And I understand, I drive that road, and I've seen that traffic situation that the other gentleman spoke about. It's bad right around Christmas time, but in my experience, I never had an hour and a half wait, maybe 15, 20 minutes, and I'm going up and down that road all day long. Thirty minutes at the most has been my experience during, when that shift changed. And I think with this turning lane that they are proposing to add, I think that's going to help a whole lot, and that's something that they voluntarily agreed to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? All right. Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right. With no opposition, there is no rebuttal needed. The public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. Council, what is your pleasure regarding this? Councilmember Perro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question for Ms. Upsher, if you've got a moment, and while she's coming up, Mr. Martin. As everybody here is well aware, we are prohibited from commenting on the public, I guess, the public participation or the public comment period. We don't respond to that. But I wanted to point out something, as much as we may like to respond to, we don't until a later time. But, Mr. Martin, in your presentation, you said that it's potential that this widening would benefit the congestion issues they're seeing on Dillard Drive during shift changes.
It's adding extra storage capacity at the light, which would allow more through movement, because right now it just backs up in one single lane. So you're widening the road out and adding an extra turn lane.
Okay. I just wanted you to restate that, since we've, since we're not able to discuss it. I thought that'd be important to hear. I think that's something, so certainly if we can do something to assist in congestion in that area, this is going to help. So if we approve it, that is. Ms. Upsher, thanks for coming up. As you know, I've said vocally time and time again that I don't believe in changing industrial zone space because we are landlocked. We have limited space available, and I just think it's bad business. I know that, Mr. Martin, said that you had bought into this idea. I don't understand why exactly, but if you'd help me understand that and convince me that it's, that it is something that I should support. I'll tell you, technically, I like the idea, but I'm very concerned about industrial space.
So I think that my decision to support the project was predicated off of that this land has been for sale, as Rick just mentioned, for a very long time. I've marketed the land on our, on the state's website as well as our website, and I've not had, I've only had one other group come to talk to me seriously about developing the site, and that was a church. So I just believe that, and in that case, I stood firm and talked about that we needed to preserve the industrial land. But I do think that the cost of the property, the value of the property can be prohibitive from a industrial side, and I just think that the, that neighborhood itself has changed drastically with all of the additions from Windhurst and the Summit and all of that area there. So mine was really based on that, keeping someone from being able to sell that property or see the property developed and not having any prospects, whether it was through the means that we used or Rick bringing us somebody, that having somebody that was going to put it into play. And I also think in reading over the Planning Commission minutes, that the one, I'm always concerned about the industrial neighbors and how they feel about it, and I believe that Wexco-
That was my next question to you.
Yes, sir. Wexco that backs up there did come to the Planning Commission, and while he had questions, all of those questions, you know, were answered. He was much more concerned that if apartments were built, that they would be anywhere near where, and he's got a large parking lot there, too. I don't know if you can see it from there, but his parking lot backs up to where this parking lot was. But at the end of the day, I don't believe that Wexco had any issues with this site plan either.
So this, in your opinion, would this detract from the other industries in the area? I guess those industries were established prior to the Windhurst development.
Yes, but I don't think it would detract.
Is it going to be, is it any sort of benefit at all?
I think it would be a benefit from the standpoint of that this is really a mixed-use project where, you know, the gym may benefit, the housing may benefit workers who might work in the industrial area and then be able to, you know, to walk home from there. And I think the gym, from a tourism standpoint, the gym they're proposing and the way they are looking at travel teams and that kind of thing would be tax revenue for the city.
That's right. You do supervise tourism as well.
Yes, sir.
So you think this would be an appeal for travel? I hear lots of comments about not having enough basketball courts in the area, and talking to Mr. Nelson, I thought also indoor soccer would be pleasant there.
And we've just completed a sports tourism strategic plan to try to determine how we leverage the unbelievable assets that Liberty has, but we can't always access all of those, and we've looked at, you know, event space, but primarily travel teams and all that. That's what Gary was referring to in Virginia Beach, is like, they've built a business off of attracting those youth sports. And I think they also run the kinetics gym, which is over in Fort Hill, and they're seeing that that gym is so full that this gym would be yet another, a complement to the area.
And in your opinion, do you have other readily available, marketable industrial property that could be still preserved and held for future industrial use?
Yes. The EDA currently has two sites, and there are other sites, I think was mentioned in PDC this morning, that John Capron, that extension that's going to go on there is probably going to open up two or three additional sites off Oddfellas Road. There are more sites in Oddfellas, and Rick can probably speak to it. Just those industrial prospects coming through, sometimes a 15-acre site is not even going to cut it for what some of them want to do. We have just finished a site characterization plan where we were asked by the state to take all of the industrial sites that were over 25 acres, so they are really looking for anything over 25 acres and getting all of those sites also behind Home Depot. I know some work would have to be done to that, but that Creekside site that goes up back behind there, that's another really good site of some size.
All right. So we are not going, it's not going to be a detriment to the city if we let this go to a commercial use, B-3C, in your opinion?
In my opinion, no.
Okay. All right. Madam Mayor, I believe that I will move the ordinance for this. I think there are two motions that we have to do, and three. Three. All right. Let me, let me get this straight.
All right.
We've got a, I will move the first one. The first one is a resolution to change the future land use map. I'll move that ordinance.
Second.
All right. The motion has been moved in second, and I will defer to you for conversation. Councilmember Wilder had something to say. Councilmember Nelson?
Very brief. I'll come to it later.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Wilder.
Basically, I would say I do support the project. In looking at the traffic, I had a concern about the traffic, I understand that, especially during seasonal time periods. The way they do the change on, I think, the Dillard Road, I believe, and some of the other suggestions they made, I think that'd be very helpful, so that the ease of the conversation about that. I'm usually concerned about some of the apartments in our community, but I like the way that the concept is with a variety of businesses and fitness centers. And also, I know I have a, run a gym, and we're busy every single day, I mean, of the week. Every day of the week, somebody is using a gym. They always win it for free, but every day, somebody is trying to use that gym. So I understand the need for more gym space, and our kids travel to Virginia Beach all the time for those AAU tournaments in Roanoke and everywhere else, for all the AAU tournaments. So I was looking for more large gym spaces for those, that could hold an AAU tournament of that size. So I definitely understand that. I think it will bring in more revenue to our community. Another question was that Councilman Perro made also, was that for the industrial site, there's just there are no marketable persons that have been interested in that site for several years, and the EDA is comfortable with that, I also support it as well. They've tried to market the project and haven't been successful. At least this is another project that can bring some revenue to our community that would be an asset to the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think Councilmember Perro's made every point very, very well. I do agree, as a travels youth and adult soccer coach for 40 years, I have seen tournaments from Florida to northern Pennsylvania, and it's hard to find a facility that has all of the amenities that this purportedly would have. There's tremendous stress on our city's school gymnasiums for volleyball, basketball, indoor soccer, and all of the other possibilities for athletic youth and adult youth. There's tremendous stress on our city's school gymnasiums for volleyball, basketball, indoor soccer, and all of the other possibilities for athletic youth and adult youth, adult athletic programs, particularly in the wintertime. And to the extent it would take the stress off of the school facilities, this would be a tremendous boon. I like the fact that the residential elements of this mixed-use are on the backside, which back up to the Forestale subdivision in Graves Drive. So, it's a good transition from what is a single-family residential into a commercial area. I think the fact that the elements within the mixed-use would serve those persons who work at the industrial sites further up Dillard Drive is a plus. And likewise, the activities that would be conducted on this site are very complimentary to other activities that are up and down Enterprise Drive, not only the Jamerson Y, but the offices and eateries and other commercial areas there. So, I think it's a, it's a good mix. I share Councilmember Perro's hesitation to ever downzone from industrial for all the reasons he said. We've got limited space and we've got to preserve the finite asset. But there are good reasons, at this point, to adopt this proposal. And I think it would be successful.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Haggelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, as I look at this, and I recognize and I can appreciate some of the things that are made, you know, going from industrial, which is employment, to commercial, which is employment. The trouble, though, is this, all the apartments that are on here. You know, a lot of time, and I realize we're talking about all the gyms, and we don't focus on the fact that there's going to be 116 more apartments here. You know, I know when Windhurst first came about, some of the things that they didn't like was the fact that they built way too many apartments and townhomes there, not enough big grocery stores or anchor-type institutions, banks, and pharmacies and whatnot, and a lot of residential. I mean, I like the ability to go from industrial that's not being used to commercial. But then it's amazing how many things that we always throw in, more apartments and things with the mixed-use. You know, I really, it would be nice to see it go from, you know, industrial to a B-3. Great. But then the C is 116 new apartments. What's the, would somebody want to speak to the apartments, whoever designed? What is the purpose of the apartments? Are they needed? I know you had mentioned as far as the gym, the facilities, the revenue, you know, all the things for...
Sure. We just felt that was a good mix to have them both. They complement each other, not only within our development. When we spoke to the president at Wexco, when he came to the planning commission, he brought up the fact of his employers being able to walk to work. So, that, I think Ms. Upsher said was correct. So, it's meant for there. Hannah Wasdell, our representative, came to our office and spoke and kind of echoed the same thing. So, we feel it works in that environment. We're wanting to stay more commercial and more kid-oriented and more fitness-oriented. We've done studies to see that having that type of environment and having some residential is a benefit. People see that as a, as a plus. Now, I mentioned a little while ago that, you know, Phase 2 is kind of still up in the air. If we feel like we can go from good to great and we pull something off, then that's fine. But we like what we have up there right now. We like those apartments kind of tucked back in a way that you'd still have the privacy, the feeling of being in a home, but also being able to walk to the gym, also being able to walk to the restaurant, the venue. So, it's just where we landed. And we've put a lot of time and thinking in it. So, we value them, and I respect what you're saying. I understand, I have an office in Windhurst currently, and I understand on the apartments. So, we're not trying to create a housing development. We're just trying to bring it all together to benefit everybody. That was kind of the spirit.
And I can appreciate that. We just had one just a couple of weeks ago that came in. It was originally like 20% apartments, and now it's 80% apartments because of little change in a proffer, because you kind of go down a path, changing the zoning, and that one was industrial. Went to same kind of mixed-use. And then it went from 30 apartments to 80% being apartments because they couldn't make the business work. And the reality of it is, so thinking about if we would have gone from industrial directly to, you know, high-density residential apartments, never would have happened. But because it went from a couple little steps in between and a few years, it happened. And so, and I've seen what's happened at Windhurst. And, you know, I've recognized that that's something that they wanted a long time ago. And it should have had, is some good anchors. And when you have spaces, that could have been maybe a grocery store or some kind of major anchor.
Absolutely. I agree with what you're saying. The only thing I can do is stand here and look at each one of you in the eye and say, "Our spirit is to have this fitness center. Our spirit is to do this venue. Our spirit is to have the restaurant there." I didn't really talk about how that's going to be multiple-serve. Have you guys ever gone to some of these venues?
I love the restaurants, I love the office. I just, the apartments is where I have the trouble with.
Right. Well, the spirit of what we were wanting to do is keep all of that there. And if we can go more commercial on that side, we have that spirit to do so.
No. Where is, where is that on the map up there that you're talking about? The phase, the second phase, or the?
Can you, is that?
Yeah, yeah. Are we, is the site, is it?
Right here, going down, is what we're looking at, Phase 1. And what we have represented here, office, restaurant, and apartments, even just calling that the northeast corner up top, is Phase 2. So, what we were planning on doing, this restaurant here, and going into commercial space over there, you know, serving multiple purposes. The apartments, we really value them for the fact of just everything coming together. We've just done so much studies and seen other cities. You know, feel like that's an important aspect. We have no desire to make this a residential place. I know what you're, what you're saying.
And so, is Phase 2 all 116 of these apartments, or is that all Phase 1?
Phase 2 would be the apartments. We're going Phase 1 first with the fitness center, the indoor turf area, and the venue. That's our Phase 1.
So, the 116 apartments up there, those four areas, 24, 24?
That's the last thing we want to do.
That's Phase 2?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah. Because that would be, I like Phase 1. So, especially in a commercial area.
Yes, sir.
I mean, and too, it's, you know, it seems like a lot of times, people kind of go, "Well, it's a lot easier. You get a bunch of these in there and you, because you've got a bunch of college students that need places to live, and so people throw these up and they're all over."
Yeah. From my heart, I will tell you, and this may not mean a whole lot to you guys, but our spirit is to do the commercial. It is to do the venue. It is to do the fitness and have a small amount of apartments. It was never a dream to come in here and do all apartments at all.
And the beauty of having a small amount of apartments is, I mean, you can up the ante on the rents, too.
Yes, sir. And that's part of our studies.
Lots of people don't want to be a ton of apartments. If you've got a couple high-end ones, you know.
That's exactly what we've seen in just being able to command a, or build a better place, because you can literally walk across the parking lot, get to the gym, get to the fitness center, get to the restaurant, and, you know, get into Windhurst, too. And you guys know, everybody's walking up and down Windhurst. It's a great place to be. So, when we, when we do, you know, the apartments, we want to keep them high-end. You know, this, we've built them before for plenty of people and, you know, know how to do that. But we want a higher-end thing. If you guys have seen on some of the pages on there, aesthetically speaking, what we want this place to look like, we want to keep it high-end, you know.
I thank you for that. That's, you gave a compelling presentation. I really, I didn't know if I was gonna, but I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice, thank you very much. Vice Mayor Dolan. You can probably stay there. Stay at the podium, she said. Thank you. I just have a question. I'm trying to figure out, where is J. Crew in relation to all this? I'm trying to figure how that...
Jake, as you pull into stopway to go down to J. Crew.
Be way back there.
There you are. But it's that, it's the intersection. It's way down.
Okay. So, then what is your projected timeline for Phase 2?
Soon as we're done with Phase 1.
Okay. So, it would be, this project just kept moving forward?
If we wanted to build everything at one time.
Can I get you to come back to the podium so people can hear you? I don't know if we have a pointer, if he has to go back up to the... No, he doesn't. Okay. All right.
Yep. Sorry. Yes, soon as we're done with Phase 1, we want to jump into Phase 2. You know, if everybody said, "Let's build it all at the same time," we can't do that. We have to start somewhere up front and kind of work our way around. So, the important things to us are to get into the main Phase 1, the fitness and venue.
I'm just wondering if it was like four years down the road, or if it was like...
No, ma'am. We want to be done as fast as we can. And doing these things in the past, dragging them out is not a good thing. I don't like dragging it out. I don't like part of it looking like a war zone and part of it being nice and finished. So, the object is to get it done as fast as we can.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilder?
Just one question, in reference to the apartments. I have a lot of persons that work for the, that work at J. Crew, work in the area, and trying to find an apartment in the area would be really helpful. Now, what is the price point for those apartments? You mentioned high-end.
Well, when we say high-end, I'm talking about how they're built, how they're looking, not necessarily high-end in price. I'll speak freely if that's okay. We've done these for some people before, and they'll come in and really try to grab top dollar, and they sit. Market doesn't take it. So, you have to be within the market reasoning. Some of the two-bedroom apartments now, we're renting for $850. Three bedrooms for $950. So, I don't see it going above that. I see a demand coming if we keep that price there because of what's in the, what's already there, what's available to people. It's not that we're going to come in and try to overprice. We like the ability to have all these amenities. And when you have amenities and you have a fair price, people are going to stay. And our goal is to keep that, not try to reach the top end. I've seen people do that and fail.
And that was just my thought, just to help person that work in the area for some living arrangements, something that's affordable to them. That's why it's not too high-end.
That's right.
Because I don't know what the wages are at J. Crew. But again, this stuff is not too, too high. That's what I was trying to do.
No, sir. It's more of a, it's a more of a mindset concept with building and making it look good aesthetically, across the board. And it's not, it's definitely not the high-end. I've seen that, and I don't like that myself personally. I wouldn't do that. I don't do it now, and I have some, so.
Imagine, there's got to be at least, what, 3,000 apartments back there already? Between apartments and townhomes and rentals and...
Maybe so.
There's lots of options, I guess, but there...
To me, it's closer to J. Crew and those other places that are right there. That's what I was thinking about. That'd be helpful. For people that work there, can just easily walk to work.
Yeah, they could walk rather than wait in that hour-and-a-half turn.
Exactly, because I have two problems.
You're right. And Hannah Wasdell coming in and speaking to us, I don't mean to keep talking. Y'all tell me to be quiet if you want me to. But Hannah coming in, talking to us in Wexco, saying that it would be nice for their employees to have the option to walk across, the option to walk from Wexco to maybe work out at lunchtime, things of that nature. So, that it made us feel good. It made us feel like we were on the right path.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know, I just, I haven't had, you can go back. I think you've answered all of our, the questions so far from council. Ms. Upsher, I just, talking about going from the industrial piece, if you could come up, I know I've been in meetings where now companies are looking for the pad-ready sites. And now, more than that, more than just pad-ready is the most recent that I've heard. So, this is not an area that is ready for that type of go also for industries or businesses that are looking. Could you speak to that a minute?
To be really honest, this is probably in better shape if somebody wanted that for a site than a lot of the other sites, because it's a flatter site. But that's why I'm saying, where the, where it's located, for all these years, we have had no industrial interest from my office in that site. It has been much more, like I said, who came forward was a church that wanted to be on that corner. So, I think that while it is, you know, it's not as rough as some of the other sites that we are trying to get to that pad-ready, there's just where it is located and the price, what the, what that market will bear. I really feel like that an industrial price, as Rick had mentioned, kind of hamstrings the owner of the, of the property to say, "The only way I could get an industrial customer in here is to cut the price significantly," which is not what the market bears out.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to address that point a minute.
I'm very happy that you know pad-ready.
I think the site is fabulous, it's just that she said the price.
Right. The price point of that. I just want to, okay, bring that point up. Okay, thank you. So, now we have a, oh, Councilmember Haggelson?
Mr. Martin, maybe you can address this. As far as the turning movement, I know you kind of addressed them somewhat, but as far as the, I've been through that Dillard Drive time, and it hadn't been Christmas or whatever, but it was some, it was, I was shocked at the backup. But this, you said, there may be some left-turn lanes off of, so you don't have to go all the way down to Dillard and over? What's the design that's going to actually make an impossible improvement, especially with all the extra people that are going to be coming in and out of there?
Did you put the striping on here? You did? Okay.
So, is the whole way in and...
So, the extra lane will actually come from the intersection of Enterprise Drive here down to their entrance. So, it would allow for a through and a right turn and also a left turn dedicated movement, where now you just have the one lane. So, what's happening is everybody's stacking up this way. Even if, even if they're waiting to make a right-hand turn, they're stacked back to here, and they can't make it because they're probably behind people trying to make lefts.
And they somewhat stack on Enterprise, too, I think, going back to take a right turn and those coming out of Dillard.
Yeah. I can't speak to that, but...
So, is their ability to take a right turn off of Enterprise into the development?
Is what this will, it'll allow you to take a right or a left is what it'll do without having to wait.
Okay. And so, the big entrance is back there off of Dillard?
Correct. This is the full movement entrance here. This, I stand corrected, this will be a right-in.
And right-out?
And right-out. And I believe you said it was allowing left-in? But not a left-out across Enterprise.
So, a left-in would be helpful, because it's going to get people out of there before they have to go all the way to the intersection and back. But it's not going to be too far from a traffic standpoint, since it's a turn-in from, not too far from there? You know, from the interchange?
I don't believe so. I'll let Mr. Beasley address that.
So, where that, the entrance is, is not too terribly far from the signalized interchange at Dillard and Enterprise.
The entrance on Enterprise, right?
On the Enterprise drive side, so the one right up there, right above the restaurant. You know, normally, they've always said that they don't, you know, limited access because of they don't want queuing or they don't want accidents from someone coming. How is that site going to work, based on your engineering of it?
Well, we felt that, you know, if, because of the proximity of that entrance, that access point to the signal, if you have southbound traffic waiting to turn left onto Dillard Drive, for instance, and they back up beyond that entrance, then you're impeding people to take a left out of there anyway. So, it'd be safer just to prohibit that left, make people turn right.
Make the left out of it, but the left going in it?
Correct. Yeah. You can turn left into it because you would be in the turn lane to turn left, and you wouldn't be blocking traffic. But we wouldn't want somebody coming out of that entrance not being able to turn left because of the queue waiting to turn left onto Dillard Drive and getting stuck there and blocking traffic.
So, is some of the improvement going to be widening of that a long way back to make a turning lane that can actually go way up there to turn either there or turn here? To turn into the property or turn into Dillard Drive on left?
So, turning, to get, to turn left out of that development...
Talking about, you said left going into the development. So, we're coming down 221, coming down Enterprise Drive, taking a left turn into the development, the top part, right above the restaurant. Is there going to be, that's going to be now a turning lane way back there?
Well, there already is a turning lane. It's a two-way left-turn lane right now. And a turn lane for left turners onto Dillard Drive.
A ways up.
So, they already have a lane to get into to turn. And then turning left out of there, you can't turn left. You would have to go to the back entrance on Dillard Drive and turn left at the light on Dillard. And so, currently...
Because like when somebody is turning left onto Dillard Drive in a left turn lane and then all of a sudden there's a new left turn. So you have somebody that's waiting for the left turn arrow, if you will. I don't know if it's that or there. But then you stop well in advance and turn left. There's sometimes a little bit of traffic problems because of this huge gap. People are thinking you're turning up there because there's not a, or they get behind you and they miss the, they miss the signalized interchange, the left turn. You know what I'm saying? Do you do the traffic guy? You did the traffic study on this, right?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I just didn't understand your question.
So now, so normally you're in a, in a line. It's kind of like at 221, turning onto Lakeside Drive, then all of a sudden somebody turns into Fresh Market. I mean, there's a little bit in front of the 221, in front of the major turn movement. Somebody hits their brakes and turns left into Fresh Market, the first interchange. It's going to be like that?
You're talking about turning left into...
Into the development. Because you said it's only a right turn out of the development, no left turn out of the development onto Enterprise Drive.
Well, yes, I see what you mean. And perhaps during that seasonal traffic, that could, could be an issue. But I don't think you would want to prohibit lefts into the development there. You've got 300-plus feet from Dillard Drive to that entrance. And, and the study that I did showed left turn queues...
Less than 300 feet.
Less than 300 feet.
That was my original question that I asked. Okay, so that's a long way.
Now, seasonal traffic, you know, I didn't count traffic during, during the seasonal time. I did traffic counts during the school year, so we did pick up school traffic. But I didn't pick up, you know, November, December seasonal traffic like the gentleman was speaking about.
Now, Tom, were you, I mean, you kind of seemed surprised by that. Is that what your understanding was?
About the...
The left turn in?
Actually, yes, I was surprised about the left turn in.
Is 300 feet or yards or whatever you just said, that's, sounds like a long, a long enough area for queuing without having traffic problems. Is that true? It's hard to tell how far that is from that.
I've been accused of being a traffic engineer, but I'm not, so...
Yeah. He's waiting to answer.
I, I can't tell you that.
Yeah, he didn't.
So Mr. Beasley, 300 feet, it seems like a, is that a long area for queuing? Plenty?
I mean, it, you know, it, it would take a lot of traffic turning left.
Back up to that.
And, and you don't see that during typical everyday operation. And you, and you know, I watched it during the AM and PM peaks. And it, you know, that, that queue clears out of there quickly. There's only two or three cars in there.
All right, he, come, come on, Mr. Beasley.
Can I interject something here? I've got a suggestion.
Okay.
I think that, Mr. Martin, this still has to go through a detailed site plan review. Is that correct?
Correct.
So could we address that there? And could you all analyze and make sure that the warrants are met for the turning movements there? Because I think this is really a technical question and doesn't, doesn't necessarily relate to the zoning unless, unless you're really concerned about the traffic impact.
It was just because the gentleman had mentioned about that and reminded me of that traffic that's around that area.
Well, if, if you look at, and this is why I'm surprised. If you look at the minutes from the planning commission meeting, I said in the planning commission meeting that, and I can't find it right now, but the city is looking to prohibit left-hand turns into the development from Enterprise Drive. So I, I really think I would prefer to get the city engineer's opinion on the left turns in.
Is that, is that something that can be handled at the site plan review level?
I think it can be handled through a traffic study, yes.
Okay. I don't think this is something that we want to debate tonight or have any engineering debate on.
I think it would help if it actually, if that queuing isn't bad.
You know, again, I have no idea how far 300 yards is or feet or whatever you just said from a queuing standpoint. But if it helps to flush that out and you can turn and you don't have to go through that long queue, that would actually be helpful because it's not going to exacerbate the problem on the corner of Enterprise and Dillard, if that's making sense.
I did, you know, I had discussions with Mr. Barry.
Okay.
Many discussions about that particular entrance. And one of the things he recommended was a modular project, product that can be placed in the median that will prevent left turns out and allow left turns in. Instead of building a concrete median, there are some other, you know, things that you could do. But I don't think Mr. Martin was, was in on those discussions that we had. But clearly all along, the, the intent was to, to prohibit left turns out and not in.
So again, is this something that we can handle and the technical aspect of the review with staff and the engineering or the engineer, as Councilmember Perro suggested? We don't have to decide that tonight to decide on the project.
So it's in the site plan. We approve it, it's there. And so then they can work out the details of how, I think, but it's, it's, I think that's, it sounds like it's, I wasn't asking it to be pessimist about. I was trying to figure out if that can actually help, how that actually works to get people from queuing in that Dillard Drive Enterprise queue. If they can turn in and out ahead of time, they miss that queuing. I think that's actually a benefit.
So, okay, I think what you can do, yes ma'am, you're absolutely correct. That's something we can handle at a site plan level. Councilman Helgason is saying, well, you know, once we approve the plan, it's there. This is also a conditional use permit for the apartment. So if you're that concerned about it, you can add a condition about the left-hand turn movement to be approved by the city engineer and handle it that way. But as far as us sitting here trying to debate queue lengths and that, I'm, I'm not prepared to do that.
Prepared to do that.
And that's something that could be addressed at the, at the resolution where you're allowing, where the conditions. And one of the conditions is substantial compliance with the site plan. And we could add a second condition that said approval by the city traffic engineer or...
Turning movements on Enterprise Drive are subject to approval by the city engineer.
Right.
Okay.
So we could do that.
Well, I mean, again, I didn't bring this up because that hurts them.
I mean, it's because of the fact that you want to know that you can get in and out of there without exacerbating the problem on Enterprise Drive, so...
We want to know that you can get in and out safely.
Yes, exactly.
All right, thank you. So right now we have a, oh, thank you, Mr. Beasley, thank you. So we have the motion that has been, I forgot who seconded it.
Simply for the future land use.
Right, for the future land use. Right, exactly. The motion made by Councilmember Perro, seconded by Councilmember Nelson, to adopt the resolution for the future land use map amendment from Employment Two to Mixed Use. Any further discussion on that? Please cast your vote. And the motion passes six to one. Next, we have the motion, further discussion or vote to rezone approximately 15 acres from I-2 Light Industrial District Conditional to B-3C Community Business District Conditional.
Moved. So moved.
Thank you. Moved and I heard Councilmember Wright seconded that one, I think, right there. All right, any further discussion? Please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Motion is next to, for conditional use permit to allow the instruction, the construction of commercial and multifamily buildings.
Madam Mayor, I'll move the resolution as it stands. If somebody wants to amend it by adding a condition, feel free to do so. But I'll move it as it stands.
All right, thank you. So it is moved and it is seconded?
Let me find it.
Oh, it's here.
And so is there a motion to amend it?
No, I mean, it was made, you know.
Okay, thank you. Or, yeah.
One quick question. I'm trying to find it.
Where?
Here it is.
I'm wondering if there's a way to, let's see here. Is there a way to separate that between Phase One and Phase Two or not? Because you got the 116 apartments and on this one as well. Because if they, if they, because for example, if they go, wanted to have it compliant with the site plan and they do all their business stuff, which is Phase One, and then later they say, well, we only want, you know, two apartment buildings as opposed to all of these.
Well, you, you approved the rezoning. The only thing that the conditional use permit is for is the residential apartments.
Yeah.
That's it. So you, you can tie whatever you want to to the apartment buildings.
So this one, which is the third one, it is, so it's a B-3. So we already voted for the B-3. I voted for the, the business zoning. But this right here allows for the C, which is the conditional which allows for the apartments?
Well, technically the B-3C was for the proffers. This is a conditional use permit. And the condition on it right now is that the property be developed in substantial compliance with the concept plan dated so on and so forth.
So I'll just say, I'm, I will vote for this, but I really do hope that you don't put those apartments. I, I, or limit them as best as possible. So, anyway.
All right. So the motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Good luck with the project. Thank you. Thank you. Next is general business. This section includes general items of new business. Number 10, introduce a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2019 city federal state aid fund budget to appropriate $21,293 with resources from the Virginia Wireless E-911 Service Board Fiscal Year 2019 Public Safety Answering Point Grant Program, which was used to replace aging computer equipment for 12 Computer Aided Dispatch or CAD. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Ms. Foster?
You have for you our recommendation. This is a grant, there was no matching funds required. We use this, as it said, to replace all of the computer equipment that we use to run that Computer Aided Dispatch system, which is really our call management system for all of the public safety calls that come in. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you for being here. This was reviewed by the Finance Committee on this morning. And so I'll turn to our Finance Chairperson, Councilmember Hugelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And you, you'll probably notice a long time span, a matter of two years basically, between the submitting of the application and the approval. I, I'd be, I'd be one that says government runs really slow, but that would, that wouldn't be accurate in this case. It actually forgot to have to appropriate it. So this has already been, the, the grant was done, the money was there, the computers are purchased. It's just now a matter of an allocation. And so the Finance Committee met, understood it and recommend approval. And I put that forward as a motion.
All right, thank you. There's no second. Is there any further questions? Please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next is number 11, which is introduce a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020 city federal state aid fund budget and appropriate $103,920 with resources of $51,960 from the Virginia Office of Emergency Medical Services, Rescue Squad Assistance Fund and $47,297 from the fiscal year 2020 General Fund Fire Department Budget and $4,663 from the General Fund Fire Equipment Assigned Fund Balance to purchase three LifePak 15 cardiac monitors for the fire department. And staff will provide a brief summary of the request and this is Fire Chief Wormser.
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, thank you and good evening. This is a grant that we apply for two times a year. In this particular instance, we apply for three LifePak 15 monitors. These are our cardiac monitors that we use for doing 12 EDKGs and a variety of other cardiac treatments when we're providing EMS service to our citizens. These are just upgrades to monitors that have met their useful life. And we're very fortunate to be able to obtain this grant from the State Office of EMS.
Thank you. And this also went to Finance Committee this morning, so I'll turn to Councilmember Hugelson again. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And this one came through and I guess we didn't say it as strongly as we should have at the Finance Committee, but hats off to the chief. They originally applied for this grant to get an 80%, 20% match. The state came in and said, nope, only 50% match. Historically, a lot of times chiefs in the past used to come to Finance Committee and say, hey, get it out of the reserve for contingencies, but you founded it in budget. And delighted and thankful and thank you. And I'm glad that you can get the equipment to make sure our citizens stay safe. Finance Committee heard it and make a recommendation for approval.
All right, thank you. No further questions or discussion. Please cast your vote. Thank you. And the motion passes seven to zero. Next is number 12, introducing a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020 city federal state aid fund budget and appropriate $15,213 with resources from a grant from the Library of Virginia to preserve deed book JJ 1884 Marriage Bonds A- through L 1835 to 1840 and Marriage Bonds J- through Z 1825 to 1834 at the Lynchburg Circuit Court Clerk's Office. And Mr. Wingfield will provide a summary of the request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, good evening. Again, we continue in our preservation work within the office. And the Library of Virginia has approved a grant to the amount of $15,213 to continue that preservation work to preserve some of the historical documents that are within our office. In this particular case, the one is, one of the land records books dated 1884. And then continuing on with the marriage bonds, commonly now known as marriage license, going back from 1825 to 1840. So the work will allow, the work on these documents will allow, be, remain open to the public for public viewing for the future, as well as we have it digitized for within the office as well that they can view on the public view stations.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wingfield. This also was reviewed by the Finance Committee. Councilmember Hugelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, this as well, you know, it's not as simple as just scanning a document that was old. It's a matter of taking old documents that are crinkled and wrinkled and stuff on them and making sure they're preserved where, and digitized so they can be preserved. It, it is nice to see a lot of our old records, you know, that are, that were there. It's based on genealogy and based on lots of things that are now going to be preserved for a long period of time. Delighted that the grant that you have applied for is 100% without a matching requirement and hopefully they'll keep on coming. But we met and discussed it and wholeheartedly approved it and we put that forward as a motion to council.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, then please cast your vote. Thank you, and the motion passes seven to zero. Next is consideration of approving the donation of a surplus vehicle to Central Virginia Community College for use by students in the Administration of Justice Program. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request and this will be Ms. Severcek.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, Central Virginia Community College President John Capps has asked the city to donate a recently surplus Crown Victoria for use in the college's administrative, administration of justice program. This vehicle will be used by students in the defensive driving and officer survival training components of the program. Both of these components are required by the Central Virginia Criminal Justice Academy and the vehicle will replace a vehicle that was previously donated to CVCC by Campbell County. That car has reached the end of its useful life. Staff recommends the donation of this vehicle as students from this program become strong candidates for employment in local and regional law enforcement agencies. City charter requires five votes to approve this donation and both Fleet Services Director Chuck Kramer and Chief of Police Ryan Zudimus support this donation as well.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Perro?
Madam Mayor, move the resolution.
All right. Is there a second? Councilmember Wright has seconded that motion. Is there any further discussion or questions?
I'll just say, if this can help Chief Zudimus in recruiting, I think it's a worthwhile investment. We'll still have the Lynchburg City Police logo on it and all, they get to drive the white and blue, the blue. Yes, all right. Wonderful.
Thank you very much. No further questions? Please cast your vote.
Just to...
Oh, Councilmember Hugelson?
Describe that a little bit. So how, is there going to be a tie? I've been, so help, describe that if you will.
Describe, I'm sorry.
To help, how, how you're going to help, use this to help recruit?
Yeah, so these vehicles are used, a lot of times students that are at CVCC as a part of their curriculum will actually be sponsored to go through the police academy. And this vehicle is there. In order to participate in the police academy, they do not provide vehicles, the host agency for whoever that candidate is or... vehicles. The host agency for whoever that candidate is, or whoever employs that candidate, has to provide a vehicle. So in this case, if they're being sponsored through CVCC, this vehicle will be used to allow them to complete the academy, and then obviously, we'll let them know where they got it from, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
This is the first time I ever remember, I've never seen this before. We've never have done this, so.
To my knowledge, no.
A new program or a new...
Again, this is something they've used, an old car from Campbell County that had been donated that's reached end of life. And this is a vehicle that, for our purposes, has reached our end of life. It would be otherwise auctioned off for, quite honestly, very minimal amount of money, and I think this is a better investment of it.
So a number of years, that car, the car from Campbell County probably looks like the one driven by Sheriff Buford T. Justice.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next is consideration of a closed meeting for discussion and consideration of the city managers and the city attorney's performance evaluations pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. May I have a motion to go into a closed meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion has been made and seconded. Please cast your vote. Thank you. We are now going into closed meeting.